All right, Madam Secretary. It's Councilwoman Bobzian still on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Oh, good, thank you. I'm so sorry. You've been so patient.
Madam Mayor, can I, before we leave item G1, and I don't, I don't know where he went, I had a, so I had a list of all of managers and chiefs, and it was brought to my attention that not only did I miss Andy Bass, but I missed Chief Soto. So I want to make sure I recognize-
Chief Soto and Andy Bass.
I want to make sure I recognize Chief Soto for everything that he has done and how much I appreciate him.
Don't worry, you'll get other opportunities to come back and give the ones that you forgot.
Right.
We'll just add to the list. So you'll have plenty of opportunity in case. So just, yeah, keep it, keep it in the back of your mind. And I'm sure they appreciate that very much.
Do you know how those people feel that want to recognize elected officials as being, like, every time they're like-
Miss one.
Okay. So we're still on G1. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion from Councilwoman Jordan.
Move to accept the city manager's report.
All right, so I have a motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on. Item G2.
Good afternoon. Kelly Learman, Director of Human Resources. I've been doing human resources for a long time, and performance reviews are always critical. But I can't imagine the fortitude that it takes to do it publicly. So kudos to both-
I would agree.
-city manager Klinger and our city clerk, who have to go through the public process. I certainly support transparency, but that's because it's not me. On an annual basis, the city council conducts a performance evaluation for the city manager. The performance evaluation process is a planning process that reviews accomplishments, establishes goals and objectives, and most importantly, provides feedback to the city manager on the established criteria and performance goals for upcoming. The process has three steps. It's a self-evaluation that the city manager completes. It is a survey that's completed by those of us who he recognized earlier, the management team in the city. Those results have been all provided to you in the reports. And the third and maybe most impactful part is the opportunity for council to comment on specifics about the performance. If, if Madam Mayor so allows, perhaps you would like to enter your individual comments into the record now to complete the evaluation process.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Actually, Madam Secretary, any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will start with Councilwoman Breckus.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me be the leader on this discussion. You know, I was saying before we, you know, made the decision how to proceed, you know, I do see this as our top two jobs of the year. Setting the budget, evaluating our chief executive. And so I take it very seriously. I did fill out our evaluation form and have introduced that into the record. Do you all, did you all get a copy of it? Each year we've had our forms. I've, I've filled them out and made sure they were available. I don't know if you, oh, okay. Well, I've got a copy here, but I'll, I'll make sure you all get them. And this year I did something a little different. I, there's a continuation of some of the themes that I brought up last year and noting those. But I also, on my evaluation, spoke about, and I want to make this clear, because I think sometimes I've, I've struggled with this in my mind, is are these comments applicable to our city manager, our chief executive and his performance, or the organization, organization as a whole? And I really feel that the best practice, the best approach for where we sit in our seat is to focus on the manager. You know, so that's, that's where it is, unless I otherwise noted. This, we're not evaluating the organization. We're not even questioning, you know, the great work that our staff does every day in doing their job. So we're really looking at the manager himself, because he's the one who reports to us directly. So some, just, I have, I think, five themes. First of all, the good. I think a lot of the resources we put in the 2016 budget are being put to good and strategic alignment with our strategic plan, with our vision. So, and some of that came up with the previous item. I've had hesitation about the growth in the city manager's office, but I think it has provided some resources for the manager to be more responsive to, you know, the initiatives that we drive in our policy-setting goal. I think also it's been good to see, we valued public safety, and we're bringing on and onboarding some, some upticks in those areas. Not as much as we'd like, but within our abilities. The initiatives that I very much highly prioritize have been the master plan process, which to me is really our biggest initiative. It's going, going very well. Very excited about the process we're making on our downtown action plan. Look forward to those both rolling out. Now to a little bit of constructive critique about the manager's performance. You know, our job is the policy setting. We're not to be in the weeds. I think when the ULI panel came in, he said, "You look like you're a council in the weeds." That's not, not our job. We're, we're to knit, know what's lurking in the weeds, but knit, knit it all up into one broad policy direction. The manager, however, I think is in between the weeds and up in the sky, like us. And sometimes I feel like when I speak with the manager, there's issues of an operational level popping on the agenda or somewhere where I don't feel he has the pulse, and sometimes that concerns me. I think that, last year I talked about situational awareness on some of these areas, particularly the areas of growth and development, when we are in this fast-growth trajectory. And so that, that does concern me, because that's really a lot about what is city building, whether it's revitalizing your old neighborhoods or the, building the new ones. Sometimes I wonder if the vision that we have set forth is in a cross synchronicity, synchronicity among the departments. If he's not viewing the departments as these silos, but rather not figuring out how to knit them all together and have synchronicity, synchronicity among our vision in a kind of consecutive execution among the departments. Sometimes this follow-through is lacking. It seems like sometimes things appear on the agenda that I think aren't right for prime time, and then things that I thought council has given direction on have not shown up or progressed. And that's sometimes a problem for me. And then my final comment is, is a continuation of one I brought up last year, and I think I'm going to be able to articulate it a little bit better this year. Our city is changing tremendously. I think with that change, we're becoming a more complex city. And with that complexity, we have a lot of diversity of perspectives, of interests, sometimes in competing interests of city resources and attention, sometimes in ones that are not easily expressed to us. But, and so what I'm thinking is, I, I think the manager needs to understand and appreciate the diverse interests and activism that we have in this community. We have a lot of new people here. We have a lot of new types of investment. We're really emerging out of this sleeping gaming community. The construction development boom that came before is gone. We're doing, going where we want to go. And I think that he needs to understand the, the broad interest and the broader changing dynamics of the community and what that represents. And it's a big balancing act. I think it's a balancing act for us, who have a lot of issues popping up in our inbox that we haven't seen, and a lot of discussions with people we didn't know where they were going. But I think sometimes, you know, hopefully on that goal of his, to understand and appreciate best practices more, he can start to have a, a longer view on what, what someone might be walking through the door asking for and looking for from us. So that's one of my stretch goals for him, is to appreciate, you know, the changing dynamic of our urban environment, in addition to the ones I mentioned before. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you. Well, first off, let me just say, I think it's timely that we, on this day, are talking about your accomplishments. And one of the biggest accomplishments is you continuing to steer the ship through some very difficult financial times and keeping us in the black and keeping us on good financial footing, while Wyoming just announced a $248 million budget cut, and Detroit just approved a $600 and something million bailout. So I think it's important that we recognize our priorities and how you have strategically prioritized the budget and our financial security for this city. I think it's incredibly important. The pedestrian safety stuff, safety in particular, is a huge issue in our community, and you have helped us to facilitate many things, and in large part, relationships. The relationships previously with some of the unions was not great, and you have been a conduit to a lot of repaired relationships. So kudos to you for that. The OPEB trust, I can't say enough about having, starting to fund that, volunteer program, just a lot of really good things that are going on. If I were to say some things that we could potentially improve upon, I, I like to, in, in my HR experience, I like to express these to you at the time that they occur and in private. But I also understand that we are in a very transparent government position. So that's an interesting balance, because HR tells you not to do that. That it is not productive nor professional to air those things in the public forum. So I have tried to always give you that feedback when it happened, so it could be fresh and so you could act upon it quickly. Something that was touched on, which I think you are putting in one of your goals, is kind of closing the loop on the communication. And to me, what I have seen as potential area for improvement isn't so much within each department. I think we have the best staff, period. And within each department, it seems to operate really well. Lots of good feedback, very responsive, operates smoothly. Seems to be when there's departmental overlap or crossover is maybe where there could be some improvements in process. And you and I have discussed, you know, kind of like the mystery shopper. Maybe there can be the mystery business, you know, person coming in to get a license or to renew a license or to go through a process and just find out where the hiccups are and try to close those gaps. And the other thing which we have discussed last year and again this year, and you're starting, I've noticed in the last few meetings, you have started to take heed, interjection during council meetings. I think you bring a wealth of experience and knowledge to this council, and you do have the pulse of the departments and the rest of management. And I think you can guide us sometimes when maybe we are at a sticking point with your experience. So that's my comment.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Bobzian, are you still there?
I'm still here, thank you. So I want to, I want to express appreciation for being able to review all the comments that came from staff in the 360 review. I think that they are very instructive, and I, and I hope that all my colleagues took time to really go through those, because I think there's, there's some feedback for us in there as well. And I think ultimately, performance evaluations have to be conversations between the employer and employee about how the two parties can work together better for the future. And I, I wanted to pull out one comment in particular, because I think it, it speaks to the culture that you, Mr. Manager, have created in the, in the city with, with staff and throughout the workforce, which I think is incredibly important. Mr. Klinger's management has been effective to the point and without excessive dramatization, which allows for easy communication amongst staff without fear of being chastised or ridiculed. This fosters an environment for free-flowing ideas. I appreciate the ability to provide input, and it is, and feel, and feel it is valued. That, to me, is incredibly important, because I think when you're dealing with the public sector and public sector HR, issues of morale, issues of culture, issues of motivation, and the reward structure that comes from public service, really, you, you, you can't place a value on it. I mean, I think that the service that our, our citizens receive from the city, the quality of that service is, is directly impacted by having a, a highly functioning organizational culture. And I think that we have, we have done just that. And, Mr. Klinger, you are, you are certainly the leader in that effort. And so I really appreciate seeing comments like that. I do want to go back to the PowerPoint that you had with the goals for FY '17, and I appreciate your, your candor and your, your willingness to kind of think about areas of self-improvement. I do just want to flag the two that I believe are on the second page of city manager goals, FY '17. And they've been mentioned by others in this discussion so far. Professional development and knowledge of best practices for municipal management goals for myself, and then improved communication and working relationship with council to ensure alignment with council priorities. You know, no, no, no evaluation, no, no personal evaluation should ever be, "Oh, everything's great, let's just move on." And clearly, that's what we're doing here, as we are flagging the areas for improvement. And I think what I see, and what I've seen throughout the course of the year, is in the face of enormous change and incredibly rapid pace, the manager has, is at the helm of a very fast-moving organization that is proactive on key initiatives, but also has to react to things that, you know, oftentimes come out of left field. And it's, it's sort of inevitable that, given that fast pace, there are the occasional breakdowns in, in, in keeping the lines of communication open and in staying on top of things. Certainly, in some of the 360 review comments, there were some references to time management. I frankly would rather have a manager who recognizes that there's not enough time in the day to do everything that has to be done. That's a better situation to have, I think, than obviously someone says, you know, "I don't have enough work to do." And so that's going to always be a struggle. And I'm sure we're going to be having a conversation again a year from now, that staying on top of it all is always the struggle. So I, Mr. Manager, I just want to express my appreciation that you have flagged that, and that you know that those are areas that you need to work on. And I want to express my willingness to, to help you with that where I can. I think the entire council stands ready. And I also want to challenge you to, you know, put out some action plans, put out some proposals for how we can help you with that. And if, whether it's, you're talking about, you know, possible reorganization, additional reorganization, if it's staffing, resources, et cetera. You know, clearly, these issues came up with ULI about just managing the inputs and, and managing, keep, keep it all to place in the air. So, you know, that's just a look ahead as, as I see it for the coming year. So a great job this year, and we look forward to more of the same.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. All right. Councilmember McKenzie. You're being so nice over there.
That's about to end.
Oh, I spoke too soon, is what you're saying? Is that what you're telling me?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, and, like, like I said earlier, the, the positive things that have happened in this city are a reflection of the manager and the staff that he, he's surrounded himself with. But, what is it they say about saying "but"? It just negates everything in front of it. There, there's, continues to be a lot of priorities that this council puts forward that we don't see any progress on. And, and that's, whether that's a communication issue between the council, the manager, and the staff, or whether it's a motivation issue to, to take those priorities on or not. Just a couple of quick examples of things that have been in the works for a long time. There's, is the Title 18 changes in code. That we've, we've said that we can't do those because of lack of staffing. We can't do them because of lack of staffing. But as we head forward with our master plan, it's almost vital that we have those changes made to go with our master plan. We need to make those coincide with each other, so that our code reflects what we're seeking in our master plan, and, and movement forward on that kind of stuff is, is vital to us moving forward. One of our early priorities that this council has set down and discussed and, and made a priority in our very first strategic retreat was the fact that we wanted to keep our infrastructure up with our growth. Yet we still have development plans that come forward that don't have infrastructure improvements included in that development plan, that we're not meeting the need for traffic. We're not needing, meeting the needs for the community into the future. And I don't know how much clearer we can communicate that those are, type of things are priorities, and then not have those occur. And if the, the only thing, as I said last evaluation, the only thing I can fault the city manager on is the fact that there's certain things that drop through the crack, because they're important when we discuss them here, but the next day after the meeting, they lose their importance. And they don't become important again until we sit down to discuss it with the next project or the next. So keeping those priorities in the forefront, which is a lot of what I see in, in the goals that he's put forward for himself for next year, keeping those priorities in the forefront is the one, the one weakness that I, I see in, in our city manager. I, I too went through these evaluations, and there's some interesting things, comments that are made in them. I noticed a pretty consistent rating of, of across the board that nearly 25% of the rated people in these evaluations are, have areas that they are, are almost consistent in all areas, that they think that the city manager needs improvements in, in those areas. We don't know who rated them, or if it was the same people rated all those areas, but it's pretty consistent that, that staff has some concerns that they voiced as well. And those areas that he's, that they, the staff feels that manager needs the most improvement in is centered around communication and direction. So the staff is telling us that the reason these things aren't getting done is because they're not getting the communication, and whether it's from the, from the council to them or from the, from the manager to them. There was a statement made about the ULI talking about us being in the weeds and micromanaging. And, and I mentioned earlier that there's a lot of frustration amongst the council that things that we've asked to get done haven't got done. And, and I would say that to the ULI and- And I would say that to the ULI and to the staff members that made comments about the council, they're trying to be too involved and taking too much of the city manager's time, is that is based upon that frustration. And my largest frustration has been the infrastructure issue, which has been a priority of mine and since the day I first sat at this dais. And I voiced it strongly at every meeting that we've ever had where we've been talking about infrastructure. And it's something that came into our strategic plan, it was one of our priorities. And we're still fighting that issue. And I don't know where the breakdown is, but those are the type of things that we need to improve on as we move forward because we've got to, if we're going to grow as a community, we've got to address those issues that are vital to a safe and vibrant community. And so, whatever, hopefully, these goals that the city manager set forward for himself will address that and move those forward and clear these, these issues up. It's, we'll see what the next year brings.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Nure.
So, as I said earlier, we have a lot to be proud of, this whole organization. The accomplishments were tremendous. I think in doing the manager's review, we have to look at not just the accomplishments, but how we got there. So, getting the thing done is important, but how we get it done is as well. We have a very driven staff and they aim to please. And what I, too, have taken opportunity to meet with Andrew privately and talk about some issues that I'd like to see improved, things I think he does terrifically. He said he's heard over and over that he's a great guy, so, going to say it again. He's very accommodating, he's very interested in the city and the city succeeding. So, those are, those are sort of givens, to have the job and keep the job, you know, those are essential. Last year, I mentioned that I thought that the manager needed to get out of the office more and find out more about what the staff does on a very basic level. I'm going to reiterate that again. I think that having a better understanding of what we do, how we do it, will lead to kind of crossing those silos, solving problems and that kind of thing. Something that I've mentioned for one solid year since last May has been our budget process. I wasn't satisfied with the 2015 budget process and I wasn't satisfied with the 2016 budget process. I really think it needs to begin with strategic planning early in the year. That's the January, February timeframe at the latest, where we don't just, we don't reinvent the strategic plan, the strategic plan's good. But we set priorities that will surround the strategic plan so that those can drive the budget. I would like to hear from the departments in the March and April timeframe, what they're thinking, what they think the priorities are. We may or may not agree, but at least it gives us insight into their thought process. I already have noticed that Andrew has already implemented something I suggested as well, which was to begin stepping up more at meetings, helping the council formulate a direction in terms of maybe responding to a public comment or speaking about something the staff has already taken action on and just letting us know. May not be something we know about, but it's really helpful to solving a problem. I, too, took a really close look at the, both the senior management survey comments and pie charts, as well as the overall employee survey that was done. And I, too, agree that a lot of the issues that they identified surround communication. And just a few examples so that we could get these maybe onto the goal sheet. You know, some of the areas where Andrew got high marks last year, maybe got far fewer high marks this year, an example, or I would call them areas for growth, let's just say. It had to do with cohesive teamwork, a positive approach, delegating authority, opening to new ideas. And I noticed he put that down on the chart as a fostering a culture of innovation and problem-solving, and I would highly support that. And there were things on the charts that were very good, where Andrew actually had gone from a certain score to a higher score. And those areas are things like project management and the role of the charter and the knowledge of the city, the knowledge of the charter process and the political process. So, I would add, you know, to this list that Andrew, that you have put together, I think what we need to do in addition is to develop a culture of openness and collaboration, not just innovation, but openness. And it has to do with also improving delegation. It is clear to me that we need more cohesive teamwork and that means that leading by example and excitement, there is a sense of fear I've sensed in some of these comments and just kind of, you know, I'm an intuitive person, so I feel stuff. But I really think that those are some areas that, you know, need some focus work. And I'll even say this, especially in the area of female managers, I'll just put that out there. I think, you know, just this, you know, and I shouldn't really say that, I don't know, I really have data about that, maybe I'm sensitive to it being a female manager, you know, maybe oversensitive to it. But I think it's just if there's an opportunity to work on that, I think that's, that's an area to work on. So, I think we've done great things. I think this is the year where you really potentially step into your own. We talk about interested in the city, and I would concur with Mr. Bobzian, I think about the management training, you put it down here and you and I talked about it. It might be something with ICMA, you know, to talk about some additional professional development. I'm very pleased to see that you put that down. But, but anyway, I want to make, keep our staff strong, I want to keep our team strong. You're the leader of the team. And as you rise and fall, so does the team. And so, a lot is riding on your shoulders. So, appreciate how challenging this year's been. We got a heck of a lot done, and I'm looking forward to getting a heck of a lot done next year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilman Vice Mayor Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think a lot of my colleagues here covered some of my points in many different ways, so I'll be a little bit shorter.
Thank you.
I think early on, Andrew, we've had a lot of different conversations, but again, transparency is, I think it really, I think this is, council's already said, is really just owning your position as a manager, understanding that we're a strong manager for our government. And so, what does that essentially mean in owning that and we all understanding that as well? I think that will allow for a lot more understanding of process and procedures across the city from what's been sometimes viewed as scattered initiatives. So, just really owning who you are and what your title is and then we respecting that as well. So, hopefully, leans into that. Another one would be, and again, this has been across the, everyone else is just interfering at times, weighing in on our prolonged debates, you know, get us to close up on some of these issues when we're just beating the heck out of it and just saying, you know, let me, let me get back to you guys, I know where you guys are headed to and, and I think I found a motion for you guys to move on. I think that would help a lot of people in terms of us just moving things along. Another one that I've been just kind of pushing forward and early on in 2012 is, and I think Councilwoman Nure touched on this a little bit, too, is as we're starting to grow, the opportunities to further diversify our, our staff here at the city to better reflect and mirror our community. Those, you know, I don't want to be the, you know, it's, it's apparent that we have definitely opportunities there. I think we need to do more of an opportunity to be more proactive and progressive about how we recruit, especially in the areas of public safety, executive administration, and communications. It wasn't too long ago that we approved the waste management agreement here and which I thought was a pretty simple question to, you know, in terms of communications, is how are we better communicating with the Spanish-language community in our community, which is 25%, and we do a horrible job at that. And so, what have we been doing more proactively to reach out to those, those communities? And again, it's, it's reflection on our public safety and administration to better work with those. I know working with Chief Soto, we've done some, some opportunities, but again, it's where we put in those resources. I know Deanna, I guess, Schneider, I've spoken to her a few different times in terms of how to better staff or how to get more staff in terms of Spanish language and to get out in folks. And again, it's a matter of resources, but I know we're growing, so hopefully that's, there's an opportunity there. On the other parts of it is continued positive employee relations. I think the mayor and Neoma and Jenny can attest to that. When we came in in 2012, it was ugly and things have gotten a lot better. So, great job continuing those relationships as, again, we, we don't necessarily deal with them every day, our staff, you do, so thank you for doing that. Again, provided a sound financial budget. And I think we saw this on the last budget that we just approved where we grew in a balanced way. And even though we were, wanted some growth in other places, you were creative enough to come forward practically and say, we can't necessarily do that, but hopefully we can look at that here as, to make amendment changes here in the near fut, in the near future. My personally with you is you've been reliable and action-oriented with a lot of initiatives that I put forward to you, so I appreciate those, especially my constituents in my ward in terms of parks and, and code and, and public safety. I know you delegate those great on, with, with our public safety officials, I appreciate that. And again, one of the things I carry forward in a lot of different ways is your honesty, which I think is, really just pushes it, pushes over. The tipping point in a lot of different ways is when I'm not quite there with you, at least we're honest with each other. And that's what I appreciate again from your position as a manager of being honest with me so that way we can at least hopefully find a better compromise, a better venue versus just, you know, holding things against each other, which I think is, again, not the best way to move the city forward. So, appreciate the honesty, appreciate the support in this, and again, being practical in terms of how does the city move and being flexible with that. So, and I'll be all in with there, so thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I just clarify that something that Councilman Delgado said, and that is, and he said it better than me, and so I just wanted to clarify my comments. You said it exactly about diversity throughout the organization, and that is what I meant when I talked about women management, that I'm sensitive to it, whether it's at the police, the fire, you know, every organization and every level, you know, from the immediate supervisor to the mid-level to the highest level. So, it's just, you know, I appreciate that you brought it up and said it better than me, but that's what I was getting at, is just continuing to promote that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. I do want to remind this council that it's really easy for us to sit up here and, and delegate. It's really sort of the actions that matter and results. And I think that we've had actions and results from you and very, very significant ones. I sat on this body before I was mayor with Councilwoman Breckus, Councilwoman Jarden, and Councilman Delgado. And I will tell you, it is night and day from where we have come. Not that one was, was bad or good, it was different. It was just very different because the economy was in such a different time. And so, I think that, I mean, I literally have seen, I would think in the last six months, just a wave of economic development, more energy, enthusiasm for our city. We've become very much on the radar, not only just right here at home, but on a national scale. And then that comes with all different initiatives. This council, and I'm super grateful for it because I love it, love it, love it, and it's, it's, it's great, but this council is incredibly active. Each of us have a lot going on that we feel passionate about. And I will tell you, I've been out there walking with other candidates during the election cycle, and people are very pleased with the work that we are getting done. And again, I think going back to Andrew, who we say, hey, we need to put it on, onto your lap, and then you go out there and you make it happen. And it's not easy, right? So, so I appreciate you for being patient with us and putting up with us and, you know. And so, again, I think it's really easy to sit up here and be very critical. I, I do think that we can, moving forward, because guess what? This is just going to get busier and busier and more active, and this council's going to have more initiatives because what happens is you realize, well, like for gentrification, you realize there's things that come up that we have to keep adding onto our plate. This is what ULI talked about, right? And they had some great suggestions on maybe restructuring sort of at the executive level to help sort of alleviate because we are getting so much busier. And I think that might be something to really look at because I worry in the sense that we tend to put a lot onto you and a lot onto staff. We put a lot onto them. I mean, huge kudos to our staff because they have done a tremendous job with this council that is incredibly active. I mean, people have said to me, I've never seen more L items in my entire life. So, kudos to staff. You guys are amazing to put up with, with us. And I don't think I've, I know of a better, a better team. And so, kudos to you because you understand it's all about your team. And so, I, like I said, I, I think we should take the recommendation of ULI because they've seen this in other cities where you experienced this growth really fast. And I think that that could help alleviate some of the issues that maybe some of these council members have spoken about. And make your life incredibly easier, but at the same time, I'm, I'm very happy with what this city has accomplished. It's remarkable where we've come from, you know, three years ago. So, I just want to say thank you. And again, thank you for your patience and putting up with, with us and trying to make all of us happy all the time. That's not easy. Can you imagine having seven bosses and then doing this in public? How would you feel? So, I appreciate it. Councilwoman Jarden.
Thank you. A couple of things to comment on and then I'm, if we're okay, we're prepared to maybe discuss a couple of items and maybe make a motion. I think you've done a really good job, too, in the last year of both the long view and the short view, from the reimagine Reno to the master plan, then ULI, then the downtown action plan. I really do see it as circles that are really kind of closing in on each other with actionable items and deadlines. So, I think you have done a good job of both the long view and the short view, which are now aligning with our strategic plan and priorities. So, kudos to you for that. I did want to point one thing out. In the, in your review, and there was a theme in some of the comments, and one of the themes in a number of the comments was that staff wanted you, when they come up to the podium, to defend them more. Let me apologize from our perspective for putting you in a position to have to apologize to your staff for our behavior. That's not okay. That's not okay. Fear and beratement is never a motivation. So, we need to be, as a council, more supportive when staff comes up and presents us with something. We are all on the same team, folks. And I have heard on a number of occasions, and it has been memorialized here in some of these comments, that our staff is fearful when they come up to the podium of what they're going to get from us. And we need to remember, we are all on the same team.
Fantastic point. I totally agree. We all could be more respectful to staff, me including. I think there are times, you know, I get, we all get very passionate, but at the end of the day, you're right, we're all on the same team.
I did have a question. So, what was the percentage that we, is the average percentage raise that everybody got, that staff got, or is budgeted?
Yeah, it's hard to say what the, it depends on the contracts. But what I can say is what we have planned for in the fiscal '17 budget as we work through our contracts with the various groups is 3% for employees. So, that's sort of what we have planned for, and I don't want to say that's what everybody got because it depends on the individual negotiations with contracts and where they're at and other things. And I will say there are employees who are on a step system as well. So, in addition to something that we do sort of across the board, they would get whatever their step would be, which is typically 5%.
Okay. And I am, math is not my strongest suit, but if I am doing some math, you've been with us five years and your percentage pay increase is 1%? Do I have that right?
My, if you, if you look at my annual salary from five years ago when I started to look at where it is today, it's, yeah, 1%. 1% higher.
Spend it all in one place. Wow, okay. 1%. Yeah. It's a pretty small amount.
And on that question, on that note, I mean, so, I mean, there are people that we just gave raises to, I guess, that hadn't gotten them any years or something? I mean, I think we talked, and so, or we were talking about some. I just want to understand, a lot of people took cuts, I think, but I don't know. I don't know the whole history because I wasn't here.
So, a lot of people, when I, right when I came on, essentially, my, my salary, my contract, whatever, when I came in was reduced 7.5%, which was sort of at the time what we were doing. We have, over the course of our negotiations with the employee groups over the last several years, we have restored most of those 7.5% cuts.
Got them back even.
Took them back even.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I will take a stab at a motion if we're maybe ready. I don't.
I do want to just ask really quickly, any public comment? Madam Secretary.
Madam Mayor, we did receive public comment from Stephanie Rice on our online public comment form. A copy of that has been provided to council.
All right. And so you've, is, this is what this printed?
Correct.
Okay.
And it will be part of the record.
And it will be on the record. Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Going back to Councilwoman Jordan, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. We are on the correct agenda item now, right?
Evaluation and then contract.
So we just need to approve, correct? Or is there a different?
Yeah. So it would just be motion to approve then. So.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Councilman. All right. Item G3. Item G3. Any public comment on this item? Madam Secretary.
No public comment, Madam Mayor.
No? Okay. All right. Any staff presentation? Saying that there are none? Councilwoman Brackus.
Well, you know, I'm not quite sure what the comment is here. The, are we just talking about the compensation? Because the contract, the contract, the contract renews automatically. We put that in last time.
Right. I just didn't know if you had any.
No, no, I don't.
All right.
You know, I would think a 3% is a fair evaluation. I did not know that he'd only gone up 1% in the five years. I thought a 3% i- is a good one. You know, maybe we can revisit it mid-year, you know, and, and two-step it. We did that at one of our regional boards a while ago, you know, a mid-year review and two-step. But anyway, I'll just throw that out. I heard 5% before, but anyway, those are.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, council?
What, what did senior staff give for raise this year?
At this point, we have not done anything for senior staff yet. It would start July 1st for next fiscal year. Last year, I think July 1st, I think we did, we do 2%.
Thank you.
Last year, we adopted 2% for senior staff.
Correct. Yeah.
And.
July, July 1st. So we, we have not done anything yet for senior staff. All of what we're, really all of what we're talking about is looking forward from July 1st.
So our budget didn't have raises built into the budget for staff? For the non-negotiated staff?
Three, 3% for everyone.
Was what we built into budget?
Correct.
But they have a separate contract or they just, they just, we just approve?
No, no. They're, they're, they're appoint of employees and appoint of officers.
I know they don't have a, that was sort of a theoretical, but what we did last year was during the budget process, we set their, their raise last year. And when we approved the raise.
You just approved the funding for it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you, we gave you the authority to dish it out.
Under a resolution.
I, yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, it's, it's my job to sort of independently evaluate each one of my managers and, and based on their performance review with me. So.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to ask for a motion then. Councilwoman Jordan.
Thank you very much. And just for clarification, since the contract renews automatically, we don't need to take any?
You don't need to.
We don't need to do anything with that? We just, we just, okay. I would like to make a motion for a 3% pay increase.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously? Is that you? Yeah? All right. So motion carries unanimously. All right. Thank you very much. You survived.
I guess.
Stressful though. I, I can't imagine though having to do that in public. I would not, I would not be comfortable with that.
We do it every four years.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. You're right.
It's very public. Very public.
True. It is a good point. All right. Madam Secretary, is there any more public comment on this item?
We have none, Madam Mayor.
All right. Is there any public comments before we adjourn the meeting?
No general public comment either.
Nothing? Okay, great. So without being said, may I have a motion?
A second.
Most carries unanimously. Thank you, Councilman Bobzy, and thank you very, very much.
You go to the ballgame now. Aye, thank you all.
Go have fun. Bye.